Call the meeting to order. Good morning, everybody. Item number two is Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Does anybody see any if so? Please declare now. Item number three is the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions on the committee of the whole agenda? Hearing none, we'll move into item number four, Presentations. Communities in Bloom is, if you can come down to the table, please, David Solos and David Warner. There are street cheers. Are you with them? No?
I'm here first.
Oh, okay. If you just press the red button down at the bottom there.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, we are. So, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning about Communities in Bloom, and I know your time is precious, so I'm going to try to keep our presentation to the time allotted. We're involved in the Communities in Bloom program in the Yarmouth area and want to give you a little outline of what the program's about and then an opportunity for this whole area that's coming up in September. So, Communities in Bloom program in Canada is basically about community pride and community involvement. It's about making the most of what you have. The "bloom" word tends to make people think it's about gardening only, but it's way more -- it's about way more than just flowers and gardens. There's provincial, national, and international categories and levels of involvement. It's a program that looks at engaging citizens, municipal leaders, and businesses throughout a municipal region. It looks mainly at things like environmental stewardship and enhancing green spaces and the quality of life in the area. Their motto is "People, Plants, and Pride Blooming Together." So, for the history of the organization, in Canada, the idea was taken from programs in Europe with the Britain in Bloom program, Tidy Towns of Ireland, and Village Fleury de France in France. In 1995, the program got started in Canada. There were 29 municipalities starting or involved at that time, and at this time, there are hundreds of municipal units involved in the program across Canada. In 2005, the Communities in Bloom Foundation was established, and it was dedicated to funding, developing, and spreading information about the importance of our municipal environment's sustainable development and appreciation of green spaces. So, the way it works, a municipal unit would register to be involved either provincially or nationally or internationally. Normally, you would start at the provincial level, and then the communities are visited by a team of trained judges that would evaluate the community in various categories. It's the kind of thing where if you wanted to know how things were going in your municipality, you might hire a paid consultant to come in and then give you a read on how things were going. Areas that are considered are things like tidiness, environmental action, heritage conservation, urban forestry, turf and ground covers, floral displays, and community involvement. And communities score between one and five blooms, and then five blooms can be classified as bronze, silver, or gold. Probably the most important part for the community is the written feedback you receive, so you get a report, and often these reports highlight things that judges have seen that are in front of your eyes, that are precious to people from outside that you don't already recognize. But there are also ideas there that you can glean that can help improve some of the areas of your municipal unit, and often in a very cost-effective way. So, things that are some of the benefits from this are things like increased community pride and awareness, a really valuable exchange of information. As I mentioned, this cost-effective consultant role. What you get back in a written report, you would probably pay way more for than by going through this program. You're also getting the opportunity to find out what's going on in communities of similar size, sometimes with similar challenges, and what they've done to address those. The report gives a measure of the quality of life in your community, and it also opens up opportunities for great networking opportunities. If you were a stranger going into a community for the first time, and you were looking for a place to live, and that community had been involved in this program, you could very easily get a read on some of the positives that might encourage you to settle down there. So, our story in the Communities in Bloom program started in 2006 when one of the councillors suggested that this might be a good program for us to get involved with. And the community is a group of volunteers that are interested and passionate about some of the things that we have in our community. The community over the years has been chaired by Astrid Ayers, Ken Langel, Sandy Dennis, and currently it's being chaired by Wade Cleveland. The first year we were involved in the program, I remember our hope was that we would score three blooms, and we scored four. In 2008, that's just two years later, we won our provincial category, and then we decided, well, the question in my mind is, are we good enough to go national? And then there were some other people that said, "Of course we are," and so we decided we would enroll in the national competition. So, we received four blooms our first year at the national level, and then in 2010, Yarmouth received the National Award for Heritage Conservation. In 2011, Yarmouth was recognized for having the best residential garden in a small town in Canada. That's, I mean, that's kind of a big deal. In 2012, we were recognized for the innovative programs at the Western branch of the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia. And then in 2013, we received the National Award for Environmental Action. 2014, Yarmouth won its category at the national level, so that's when you were judged to be, I guess I can say, the community that has achieved the most in your population size. Then in 2015, we won the Butcher Gardens Land Reclamation Award. 2017, we were recognized for the exhibit at the art gallery, This Is Us, and I'm not sure if any of you had a chance to see it, but it was an exhibit of photography done by people across the county showing what life is like where we live. Last year, we won the National Award for Urban Forestry, and that brings us to this year. So, in 2019, we are hosting the National Symposium of Parks and Grounds for Communities in Bloom in Yarmouth. This is the first time they have allowed a small town to do it, and we are excited about the opportunity. It brings people not just from across Canada, but also from people involved in the America in Bloom program from the United States, and people from a number of European destinations. We've had, last year, we had participants from Ireland, England, Italy, Slovenia, and Hungary, and especially, I mean, speaking to the Hungarian team, they're excited about coming to Yarmouth in the fall of this year. So, why are we here? Why do we want to engage the municipality, the District of Yarmouth? So, from September 25th to 28th, we will be having that official symposium, inviting people to this corner of the world where the international delegates will be coming. We are encouraging them to come early and to stay late. For many of them, it is, as we know, it can sometimes be a challenge to get to southwest Nova Scotia, so if you're going to do it, make it worth your while. We're a place that is of interest to a lot of people that have interests in the core principles and the core values of the Communities in Bloom movement, particularly because of our climate. So, we're in one of those regions of Canada where things can grow, and things can grow longer than in many other places. While things were blooming here in Yarmouth last fall for the National Symposium, their floral displays in Edmonton were covered in snow. So, people will be interested in kind of, some of the kinds of things that we're able to do here. Our culture and our heritage and our biodiversity have resulted in us being certified by UNESCO as a UNESCO Biosphere Region. That in itself is a difficult bar to cross, and so there is interest in this region for that reason. We have what, we have some of the best that the land and sea has to offer. People are coming to see and to experience what we can give them there. We're also planning a partners program, so we're encouraging people to bring their significant others and have them experience the area. It's an opportunity to promote our area in a way that we often don't get. I'm glowing because this is the kind of attire we had in Edmonton last year, and for whatever reason, anytime they took a picture, we seemed to show up in the dark. But it drew people to ask questions, and there was an awful lot of interest from people from across this country and from other countries in coming to Yarmouth in the fall. It's an excellent opportunity for us to spread the word about the quality of life in this area, the pace of life, the wonderful things that we can offer that you, we take it, we take for granted and other people can only imagine. The real estate market in this area, it will shock many visitors into realizing what you can get for your dollar in this area, and I'm sure people will be impressed with what they're seeing. So, it is our hope that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth will be a partner in inviting people and hosting people in the area. During their visit, many of the, there are workshops that are planned, but also site visits throughout the region, and most of those are going to be in the municipal area around Yarmouth. So, with that, and I believe a budget has been sent to you previously for your consideration, we would encourage and welcome your questions and your input and your involvement. So, thank you, and if you have any questions, I would invite those at this time.
Is there any questions from council at this time?
If you want to.
Go ahead, councillor. I guess I'd have Patty on first, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And then you, Trevor.
Thank you very much. D squared.[793.23][793.23](laughing). I'm pretty excited about what's happening here in September. I can also tell you, being at Cape Rashou when the group came out a couple of years ago, that they were extremely impressed, which was really neat. What I want to know, and maybe you can, is, and I, because I haven't seen the budget, but I will happily look at that. We have a unique village in Port Maitland that I know there are some people who would be really excited about trying to emphasize, make it pretty.
Yep.
And so, are there funds for, to do something like that? Like if, you know, to put maybe pots of flowers, to put pots off the power posts, whatever? Is there money for that type of thing, or no?
So, some of that, most of that funding will be, is what the municipal unit will invest, or they will partner with another organization, and there are partnerships that are available. Actually, one of the things that we learned from attending the national conferences, you know, if there are investments in things like that, there are sometimes good investments and some that aren't so good. So, if you're going to buy the planter, what's the best one to get for you? Or, as we've discovered, you can buy planters that are self-watering, and you can buy the planters that you need to water every day. If you're paying staff to water them, how can you, how can you get the container that's going to be the least amount of maintenance? But there are lots of opportunities for networking. So, the quick answer is, there aren't funds from the organization for that, but there's support in other ways.
Okay.
The program itself involves a trade show, so operators and businesses that provide products and services like that will be there, and that can be open, as well as workshops, but really, it's the time, probably half of the time they're here is free time, and we'll organize tours and opportunities for them to get around. They bring their spouses, whoever they may be, and they often will make it their vacation. So, Port Maitland's in one of our tours that we want to do. The beaches and the tours include all of the natural things we have, as well as some of the developed areas that are appropriate to this program.
Okay.
So, they do have lots of chance to eat lobster also.
Thank you.
Councillor Cunningham?
Oh, thanks for being on the organizing committee, and it's really important to bring people here to Yarmouth, Yarmouth County. And it's interesting, the timing of the event, I think it's perfect for our end of the province because.
It is.
Many people do not realize that we have that type of weather at that time of year, and it's really, we're, we've got probably the best weather in Canada at that point in time. We're very close, very near to it.
We've attended conferences in the past where we've had to drive through a blizzard to get home, so I think people are going to be impressed with that. Yeah, thank you. It's a great time to see what that time of year is like in this end of the province. And I, as I say, if you draw a line from Port Maitland to Pabne Co., and you come on the side of it, the climate is different again.
Councillor Allen?
I'm just looking at the request. I've been involved with a couple of interna-, or not international, national events in the town. It's great to have them come here. It's great for the business, it's great, it's just great for the town. I see your budget. Did we receive a breakdown of it, or is there a breakdown of it that we can?
Should have a breakdown.
Did you?
There's just something, okay.
So, the paperwork actually came in in two separate pieces. So, we received an email from Rick, but it wasn't an official grant application, and we instructed Rick to submit a grant application. He did not reattach the original piece. So, if you refresh your meeting agenda on your devices now, you'll see where we populated the breakdown of the budget while Dave was giving his presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. I just, just something, I'd like to see all the numbers, that's all.
Absolutely, no.
Okay, thank you.
And that's an important question, I'm glad you asked it.
No, thank you.
The national organization will do a lot of the programming, identification of appropriate people, because they have good access to a lot of sponsors. What we do is we provide the venue, and we work with them to ensure that people enjoy their visits. That's really what we do as a local group. We do have a lot of talents here that will present at that, so it's really a showcase for us to present what we do and what we have in our area to people from all over the world.
Yeah, if you look at the number of national awards that we've already won for this area, that's significant for an area of this size, with the limited resources that we have to achieve what we've done. We were in, just outside of Edmonton in Strathcona County last year, where the National Symposium was held. It has, I believe they said, 70% of the oil refineries in Canada are located in that area. Our impression was that whenever they needed something, they hired somebody. We can't do that. We go to volunteers to do that, and we achieve a great deal as a result of that.
Daniel, can I have you shut your mic off, so I can? Councillor Cushion?
Thanks for your presentation. I have to relate to what David had mentioned about, Dave Solos mentioned about the climates down here and what we can grow here. From my experience, planting trees and the type of trees to plant over my 30-odd years of doing this, is that we do have some special microclimates here that, where we can grow species that people say, "We can't grow them here." For instance, I have a couple of Socoria redwoods that are doing very well. They're California trees. I have some Red Dawn, Red Dawn, what's the last part? Anyway, I have them growing too, they're not native to here, that are growing very well now, so, and different plants that you certainly can grow here. Peachtree is, you know, some people can grow them here, you know, we're pretty successful on growing them also. And I think if you, if you look around, up in councillor, Deputy Warden's district there, they got the vineyards going up there now and whatnot. So, we're pretty unique to be able to grow a number of different types of plants and trees and whatnot in this area. We're very fortunate for that. And also, if you look at the Haskap area, that's being grown here now as production. So, I have to agree with these gentlemen here, it is a unique place to grow things.
Actually, the vineyard and the Haskap plantation we were just talking about this morning is some of the technical visits. And one of the other things we point out to the judges each year, I think, is something you're responsible, and we claim we have the longest daylily hedge in the world along Water Street at Heritage Park there in Yarmouth, so I think you planted that. Anyway.
Councillor Lebrun?
It's funny, we have another item that's coming up on the agenda, and I thought you had read the letter. It sounded like the real estate, how the real estate and the way of living here, the life that we can, that we have, and the beauty.
I've been one of the people that takes judges around every year when they come, and often, one of the questions will be, "Well, so, I see that place is for sale, what would that be?" And I, my question is usually, "Well, what would you pay for it?" And then when I tell them what the list price is, they're astounded, and to the point where a couple of times, people have said, "I think I'm going to start looking in this area." Because, and we know we've had a number, a large number of people who are retiring or semi-retired moving into the area from, I want to say, upper Canada because of what it has to offer. And this is an opportunity to really showcase some of that, some of that stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, Dave. Couple of quick questions. So, picking up on your comment with respect to leveraging the real estate opportunities with any major conference that comes to town, I participated in an initiative to do just that in relation to the Warfrat Rally, and the real estate professionals were not open to the opportunity, they were not amicable in any way, shape, or form. So, my question would be, have you had that dialogue with those professionals in that industry, and how's it going? What kind of challenges have you run into?
It's a very good question. So, right now, we are at the process, we've been distributing requests for sponsorships to various businesses, and the real estate companies are part of that list. So, initially, it's an information thing, and so then we have to follow up with the discussion. So, that piece of the, we haven't had that discussion you're talking about. I'll be surprised if it goes that way, and maybe it will, I don't know, but it is an awfully good opportunity to showcase.
It'd be fantastic.
What we have available.
I completely agree with you. I think with the professionals in that sector, they aren't making the connection.
We'll work on that.
Okay, good. And then, I had a question for you around the site visits, they're very interesting to me. So, familiarization tours are a key to any kind of long-term conversion between events and long-term investments and population growth in a community. And I see on your budget that you've planned $2,000 for the site visits. Is that adequate, given the geographic issues we have around here? And could you tell us a little bit more about the sites that are on your radar at this time?
So, the lighthouse, the light station is one, actually, Rick has been more involved in this, in the actual planning of the site visit. So, lighthouse, the Wedgeport walking trail.
The vineyard?
The vineyard. The vineyard, Bully Goth Farm, and possibly working, we haven't had that conversation with Scott McKenzie yet, but the Haskap plantation, stop at Port Maitland Beach, the Acadian Village, which is outside of this municipal unit, but it's important to take that into account as well, because we're also speaking of this end of the province. So, those are, some of them, what have I left out, Rick?
Within the municipality.
Yeah, within the municipality. So, those are some of the key ones, also including some events and food experiences that would highlight what we have from the sea, so.
Those are organized tours that we do, and they sign up for them when they come. So, we know who's going on that tour when they arrive.
Great. And just one more question, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay? In the budget, there's also an amount, an expense amount for planner fees. Can you tell me a little bit about that position?
So, we have, we've engaged Mile East Productions as, I want to say, an overall planner for the event. We felt it was important to have, we're essentially a volunteer committee with something of this magnitude. We want, wanted to make sure that this experience has someone who can oversee the fine-tuning and make sure that all of our guests have an experience they're going to go away from with really warm memories, and a sense that this is a place they want to come back to and share the good word. So, and I'm not, so I'll speak about last year's experience if I can for just a second. So, it was just outside of Edmonton last year, and there were wonderful workshops. And there was, it was evident that they spent significant sums of money on things that we just wouldn't do. I think they bought every chrysanthemum that was available in every, well, we would have cleaned out every greenhouse and retail outlet in the area to do that. And there's a lot of really good information available. One of the things we have that they don't is our heritage, and they said, "We always do poorly in that category," but where we were located felt like it was a continuous strip mall, because it's all new construction. You didn't see a building that was older than 50 years. And we have so much of that richness in this area that I know they're going to be going away saying, you know, "Wow, what a neat place." And we can also refer to, this end of the province is where the country began with settlement after our indigenous, you know, our indigenous people were here, but this is where the European settlers began to make their inroads. So, there's a lot of history here.
I only have a quick question, only pertains to the people that are coming internationally and so on. Do they have to have interpreters, or does everybody speak English? I get that.
For the most part, they will have some ability in English. Last year, the Hungarian team brought an interpreter with them, so.
Okay, so they're all basically set up in that. And I want to make, one of my points was going to be, as the CAO mentioned about the real estate.
Yep.
Industry, that is, that's a golden opportunity.
It's a huge opportunity, yeah.
Not that any one of those people that are here may purchase, but they may take information back, and somebody that didn't come here gets that information or connections and would take the opportunity to make contact. It's a very important, so.
Best real estate deals in Canada are here.
On the last note, then, David, and to Rick, thank the volunteers on behalf of the municipality.
Absolutely.
Without volunteers, you don't move forward in this end of the province. So, to you and your volunteer staff.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
No, it's, I often say, you know, I get to enjoy the benefits of the program because I'm a citizen here.
Yes.
So, what you put in, you get out, so.
Yes.
And I can, I cannot grow a plant, but I can take pictures and write. So, that's why I'm there.
Yeah, again, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it.
Next is tem dosset, light pollution.
Next is Tim Doucet, Light Pollution.
Yep. And so you'll be able to watch your slides advance there.
Okay, I won't be able to see much, but I have it online. Yeah, okay.
Good morning, Tim.
Because if there's an issue, we'll go get the IT.
Not changing?
I'm wondering if the batteries are dead. So if you just want to do your intro, Tim Liz is going to get Mike.
Okay, sure.
Looks like you have a tan, Gus.
What's that?
I'm glad, or I don't have.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for, councillors, for letting me present to you today. My name is Tim Doucet. And I've been a resident of Quinnen. I grew up in Quinnen and in the Yarmouth area. And recently, been away from home for 25 years and moved back four years ago, mainly for family reasons, but also to follow a passion that I have, which is astronomy and sharing the night sky with everybody. So that's a little introduction about me. And over the last few years, when I first moved down here, we can actually, when we first moved down here, there was a group, Societe Touristique Bontin d'Argyle, that was looking to get our area certified for its dark skies. Now, at first, myself, I knew exactly what that meant because I grew up in Quinnen. And I, since I was a child, I knew we had something special. But you don't really realize how special that is. So when I moved down here, and the Starlight Foundation was a group from Spain. And they basically have a certification program. You've probably all heard of it. There's Starlight auditors from Spain that came here four years ago that stood here where I am and spoke about what the Starlight Foundation was. So their basically mandate is to share and protect the night sky.
Just used to write the right piece.
Okay, perfect. So the Starlight Foundation is heavily backed by some very, you know, International Astronomical Union and UNESCO, which we have a UNESCO site here, which was a big bonus to start with. So after working with the auditors, our region became the first Starlight certified tourist destination in North America and is currently the only one. And we're the fourth in the world, in the world, to have two designations, a Starlight tourist destination and a Starlight reserve because of the biosphere reserve area. So you can see on the map here, the areas that have been designated. There are three municipalities, Yarmouth, Clare and Argyle, that put money forward to do something with this, to get this certification. So what does this really mean for our region? And I think this has not been stressed enough, only in the last year or so, a year or two. But it's unique to North America, as I mentioned. Starlight experiences, which means experiences that can be either created about the stars, you know, stargazing, or incorporated into other businesses. For example, like, just an example, like Tuscan Island Tours or the Lighthouse can incorporate activities for stargazing. Now, a little bit of proof on what this really means. Brain Trust Marketing was hired by, one second here, the Yarmouth and Acadian Shores to provide, you know, research into what makes our area unique. And basically, their conclusion was that the stars makes us unique here in southwest Nova. Measures really need to be put in place for us to protect what we have. Another example here is the Deep Sky Observatory that I run. Over the last three years, we've been bringing in people, about 1,000 visitors to 1,500 visitors actually now, since I did this presentation. So that's a lot of people coming. And most people stay in Yarmouth. They come out to the observatory and they're looking, you know, to go back. So what's happening here? Well, light pollution. Light pollution is basically lights that are shining up in the sky and that are basically caused by streetlights, residential lights, commercial lighting. All of it together causes a real problem for stargazing. To understand everything, in order to have proper lighting installed, you need to have the proper color. You need to have the proper brightness. It needs to have the proper shielding. So that lights that are, you know, shining everywhere basically is wasted energy. Regardless if it's LED or regular bulbs, it won't matter. It's still wasted energy. And having lights on a timer to come on when they need to, or a motion sensor. Another thing about understanding light is, to understand light, our spectrum of light that we see in the normal daylight of things, lights that are blue are not a good thing for the environment and not a good thing for ourselves. So when we talk about lighting, we want to have proper colors of lights. A lot of the LED lights that were created in the last few years are very high on the blue end of the spectrum. It has a number of health, you know, it can cause a number of health problems, you know, can cause your, to be blinded by something, you know, headlights, streetlights and the whole bit. So again, as I mentioned, why do we care about all this? Well, there's the environment. You know, lots of species, you know, in our area here, we've actually been, there's a bunch of nature preserves now that are starting to pop up. You know, Nature Trust is trying to protect the environment. A lot of these animals require darkness in order to survive. Our ecosystem, there's an example here of Rideau Ferry. All of a sudden, they had replaced lighting along the shorelines. And they realized all of a sudden there was algae growing out of control. By the time they realized what was going on, it was too late. And the contribution to the white LED lighting that they put there destroyed that ecosystem. And it cannot be restored. Another reason is our health. Our brains are wired to blue light, to wake up to blue light. You guys all know, you feel pretty good in the summertime when it's a nice shiny day. You know, you feel really good about yourself. You know, you feel got energy. But then a week in the fog, not so fun. You tend to be a little bit down. And that's normal. Of course, there's a science of it. If we can't learn what's up there, you know, we can't, you know, if we can't see what's up there, we can't learn. Here's an example in Quinnen of, in 2015, I took a photograph. And with the same camera, same lens, everything. And in March 6, 2018, around the same time of year exactly, pretty close, you can see our light pollution has actually gotten worse, which is a big, which is a big issue. We've made some headway with local businesses like Tuscan Ford to try to reduce the light pollution footprint. But what really this has to happen, what really has to happen, I'm just going to skip this slide. This just shows low impact lighting and high impact lighting, basically the difference a small shield can do. So how do we protect the night?
I think one more.
Yeah. So how do we protect the night? Well, we have to create lighting zones, outdoor lighting guidelines, you know, having luminance accordance, having a communication strategy. So Argyle, a couple of years ago, actually had a study done by, or a project done by Dalhousie University, to basically come up with a, you know, a lighting plan, like a lightscape management plan. So what we did is we took that plan and we actually created a set of bylaws. Using the template and resources from the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada, the current bylaws that we have are currently in review by the CIO and should be presented to council in the very near future. This is not rocket science to create a bylaw to help protect your, you know, your sky and your environment. It doesn't have to cost a lot of money. It's a big education piece on everybody's part. But there has to be more than just the education. You know, we have to have support by the municipalities to protect what we have. We are due for recertification this year, and I am a bit concerned. I am writing up the report on how things have gone in the last four years. Unfortunately, I wasn't a part of it for the first two years as part of the Bontin, Société Touristique Bontin. I'm the president of that organization now. And the other thing that we've done is we've created a Starlight tourist, a Starlight Development Committee that will work with local businesses and local municipalities to provide information and guidance on everything from how do I incorporate, you know, Starlight activities into my business? And how do I protect the night sky? We've also created a pamphlet called Cap the Light, Save the Night, which we're going to be circulating around to various people. And hopefully that, you know, we ask that you guys also could take our bylaw into consideration once it's complete and review it and adapt it to your own, you know, to your own municipality. There's a number of success stories around the world and around in Canada that have incorporated bylaws to protect their skies. Bonacord being one of them, Hamilton, there's a few in Ontario, actually. So again, thank you very much for listening to me today. And I hope that we can, you know, help protect our night skies for future generations to come. Thank you.
Yeah. Tim, thank you very much. That was a fantastic presentation and so on. I'm not sure. I guess, oh yes, we do have questions.
There you go. Thanks for your presentation. Two things.
Yep.
I live next to the, next to the ocean. And I must say, in the summertime, I'm out quite often on my deck looking up at the sky, looking at the stars. And when the grandkids come down, we go out there and do the same thing. And of course, we watch all the jets flying over also, right?
Yeah.
Secondly, I also look after a property out in, out in the Tuscan area way. And I'm telling you, the owner has the low light levels on his, around his property and shining up in the trees and whatnot. And I'm telling you, it was very, very difficult to get an electrical company or electrical contract to come up with the proper lighting that this, the owner wanted out there. Because they were trying to, their vision was get it bright as you can so you can see everywhere.
Yeah.
And he didn't want it. And we finally did get what, what he wanted. But it does make a big difference in, in how things look or anything like, you know. So I, I got to say, my client of mine, he certainly did his due diligence to keep the light factor down on his property, right? And like I say, we overlook the stars at daytime. And in the summer, it's very rewarding, truthfully, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll tell you that it is very difficult, but it's getting easier to find appropriate lighting. Our plan is to work with the retailers here and hopefully come up with some sort of a method so that, you know, Kents Home Hardware, even, you know, you know, what's it called, Light Co. And all these companies are aware of what our region is. And that they can help provide, you know, low impact lighting for outdoors and indoors for people. We have a number of companies, you know, in hand that we're looking at. And hopefully, you know, we can pass that on to people when we're trying to do the education piece of it. Because once people start to realize what it is, I think, you know, it makes sense.
Okay. Counselor LeBlanc?
Thank you for the presentation, Tim. As you probably know, we have 1,700 lights in the municipality of Yarmouth here. Is there anything wrong with what we have? And is there a solution?
From what I can see, just visually, and it'd be nice to find out which lighting fixtures that they did use. But it looks like the color is off. It's a little bit high on the blue end of the spectrum. You know, we, you know, can't expect to go and change every light again. But it would be nice. But they could be adapted to at least put shielding around them. Some of them are actually quite good. And sometimes it's not a matter of, you know, the shielding is not good because some of them are really nice. And then others look like they've been tipped to the side or, you know, trying to light up over there where they should have the light over there pointing down. But there are, there are modifications that can be made. Even putting a filter over the light is another option. So again, there's, there are options and ways to fix, you know, those issues.
Thank you, Tim. Counselor Cunningham?
Right. Certainly, I would like to look at the bylaw revision and so forth. And we can do that. I was a councillor when the certification process went forward and there were a couple of astrophysicists that came to council from the Starlight Organization in the Canary Islands. It's very, very interesting.
Yeah.
The conversation in the certification process was very, very rigorous. I was, it was, it was almost unbelievable how much work and effort went into that. Like, I cannot underscore how much due diligence they had to exercise to help us get there. Weeks of work, satellite data, ground measurements. I think they were here for a number of weeks.
Oh, yeah.
So it would be tragic to lose the certification. So I think that because it was so hard-won, and it's, it is such, it's an identifying feature of our area, that we should do everything in our power to maintain that and be good stewards for that designation. So thank you for coming in and reminding us again. And we'll redouble our efforts to try to mitigate the, mitigate the pollution in our area. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing that was a challenge in the start is, you know, you achieve a Starlight designation, but nobody knew what to do with it. You know, nobody knew what this meant, except for one or two individuals, you know, or businesses that were taking advantage of it. I spoke very closely with the auditors, and I'm still in contacted with those people. And, you know, it's almost like you need, you know, you don't want to put the cart before the horse. Okay, so yeah, we're doing, you know, we've got this Starlight designation, but nobody knows what to do with it. Well, everybody's saying it could be great for tourism, but nobody has seen tourism affected yet. So nobody kind of wants, or doesn't think about it. Now, we've kind of proven that, yes, you know, Yarmouth and Acadian Shores is on board. You know, a number of other organizations seem to be, you know, quite gung ho on it. So yes, this is a way to drive people here. So, you know, because money talks, right? So to have, you know, an extra 5,000 people, you know, visit our region, it's a huge benefit, right? And on the top of that, you can be a steward for other places in Canada which are looking to do the same thing we're doing.
Counselor, question?
Just one last comment. I noticed you were saying you're trying to get some of the local suppliers and whatnot to start bringing in these low light levels and whatnot.
Yeah.
And we tried all over Yarmouth and Ferris Halifax and beyond to try to get these particular lights we were looking for. And you actually had to bring them in from the States.
Yes, yeah.
So it was very important that you're, I'm glad you're looking into that.
Yeah, for sure. Good.
CIO, do you have any questions? I have just a couple of quick comments. And this is going to relate to councillor Cunningham on international students. I had the opportunity here a few years ago to be working at a job. And one day, I met this young fellow. It was at the end of the school year. He was an international student. And he didn't want to go back home to China.
Yeah.
And you're just going home for the summer, et cetera. He said, you have no idea. And this is what he said to me. He was a young teen. And he said, it was the first time I ever seen stars. He said, when I came here. He said, when I go back home, it's just solid pollution. He said, you never He said, "You never see the stars. You never see a clear sky." Also, a lot of my traveling back and forth to meetings on Halifax, usually traveling home, when you see light pollution and some of your pictures show it, I can tell when I'm coming into Yarmouth and so on because I can see Yarmouth in the skyline, all lit out. Last evening, I went out on my patio, because I knew your presentation, and looked up at the sky. Nice and clear, I could see the stars. I take it for granted, don't I? You ready? Because my big street light in my yard that I have was out. I didn't realize how much light that gave off that I can see. It was completely dark. And it was nice. It was nice. I didn't want anybody falling on the ice, but I mean...
Right.
But, no, it's, we take it for granted. And I believe, you know, something like this is very important. So, I will have a discussion with the CIO and Director of Finance. Any of our new lights or any that we have to have repaired, maybe we can look at putting shielding on those and so on, you know. And let the municipality start and try and do a few things that can help alleviate the light pollution and so on. But a fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Number, did we want to do, stay on route and go with Roger? Director of Development, Roger Devine, 11 o'clock. No, don't look at the clock. Hey, you're ahead of time right on that clock, but really, it's 11 o'clock.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Roger.
I just have a short report for you today. A little bit of an update on how our department's doing. So, things have slowed down since the new year, which is typical for this time of year. We're continuing to discuss billing proposals with clients in preparation for the upcoming billing season, but we're still completing inspections on ongoing projects. And that's typical as well. People start planning now. Early signs seem to indicate that we will be busy this year, but you never know. As people make commitments based on weather or the economy around this area, the fishing industry is a big, has a big effect on people's billing habits, especially when it comes to cottages and secondary dwellings. I have been in close contact with the municipal planner, Maurice Lloyd. And we'll be making a, he will be making a presentation to the upcoming Planning Advisory Committee meeting regarding the subdivision bylaw review. As weather breaks, the snow clears, we'll be completing site visits to see if we can proceed with any cleanups of properties. And that's pretty much it, other than to entertain any questions you might have.
Is there any questions from counselors pertaining to the Development Department this time? Everybody's comfortable?
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. To my fellow counselors, we are going to be adding another presentation this morning, which isn't on your agenda, but it would be item 4.4. It would be Waste Check in discussion screen.
Wait, Gus is here to support the bylaw work. He's here to support the discussion around the solid waste bylaw that's on your agenda.
Where's that? I apologize.
No worries.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And you want to go to...
Just put all the bylaw discussion together, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
You want to move them up now?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, counselors, I misread the information. That was presented to me. We're going to move it this time, seven, item number seven, Business, 7.6, Bylaws and Policy Recommendations to Regular Counsel. We're going to move that up to, wait, wrong way, on the wrong button. 7.6, we're going to move before item number five, Business. So, we're down to 7.1, or 7.6, excuse me, 7.6, 7.6.1 Volunteer for Committees, Boards, Authorities, Policy.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The policy work that is presented for you today basically is cleaning up the structure that we had. So, we had two documents governing how we populate committees, boards, and authorities with citizens. So, first and foremost, some language has changed with respect to the MGA. And so, there was discussion in the old policy around commissions. And Liz, the link is not actually correct, I don't think. It's not correct. It doesn't match with what Darlene had submitted. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think we'll move on because the links you have on your live agenda do not match with what Darlene and I intended to present. So, we'll, let me check the flag policy. Okay, so if we could, Mr. Chairman, we'll go down to the flag policy while Liz fixes the link for us. If you remember, last month, we discussed the flag policy. And the philosophy was to align our policy framework with what your practice has been. And so, in that discussion, council directed me to re-present that policy for your approval, including specific language around protocols for flying flags at half-mast and some other situations where the municipality will set parameters for flying flags. So, basically, what we're doing is we're aligning the flag policy with your practice around proclamations. So, the only flags that will fly will be the Canadian flag, the provincial flag, and the municipal flag. But we're creating a framework for the protocol around when the flags will fly at half-mast. And we will no longer fly flags for any outside organizations. And I think that aligns with what I understood the intent of council to be at the last committee of the whole meeting. So, if I'm on the right track with these changes, it would be appropriate to make a recommendation for council at the end of the month.
So, is there any discussion on the flag policy at this time? Hearing none, then it would be a recommendation to go to council? Okay. Let me go back.
Okay, the next, the next document, 7.6.3 and 7.6.1 actually go together. I think that's what happened. So, if you click on 7.6.3, it is the marked-up policy. So, what we're suggesting is the item attached to 7.6.1 be struck from your policy documents. And that this item, C-026-05, Citizen Appointment to Committees, Boards, and Authorities, be the new policy guiding that work. So, commissions have been struck from the MGA. And we now work in a committee, board, or authority framework, depending on the activity. So, the document has been updated to reflect that. There were some grammatical errors in the document, and we've cleaned those up. There was a direction from council to stagger the appointments to the groups so that your citizen appointments were not all coming on new at the same time and expiring at the same time. So, that's in Part 5. There was also a direction from council to provide clarity around how many continuous terms a person can serve. And that has been provided for. Part 10 is around the staff being responsible to provide citizen appointments with what they need for meetings. And the new language is around creating a framework where the citizen appointee is connected to the board or authority and is working with the board or authority directly to get packages. Because we don't always have an influence on how those committees, boards, or authorities operate, it's actually more complicated and less efficient for our staff to be in the middle of that. It's more appropriate for our citizen appointments to work directly with the board or authority to make sure they're getting their meeting packages, their meeting notices, and so forth. There's just confirmation in Part 14 that we do not pay honorariums. It's possible that the committee, board, or authority will pay expenses and maybe even an honorarium, but it wouldn't come from the municipality. It would come from that committee, board, or authority. And confirmation that citizens are required to comply with our Municipal Code of Ethics and the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And that is pretty much it. So, we're taking two policies. We're combining them into one. And we're cleaning them up to reflect changes in the operating environment because the last time we looked at this was 2009.
Is there any questions pertaining to the changes in the volunteer? I only have one, if I may. I've been on multiple committees and so on. And on those that have citizen reps, some of those committees have had, I'll say, conferences. And one notably was PAC. And I know if any of the citizen reps, when it went to any of those conferences that were held wherever, like it was in Halifax or Bridgewater, that they were compensated for room and food or, and so on. Would that still stand, or does that have to be in this bylaw?
Right, so, being compensated for an out-of-pocket expense would be different than receiving compensation for serving.
Okay, so, okay, I'm fine with that then. So, it would be the recommendation that this goes to our meeting?
To council at the end of the month, please, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And then the 7.6.4, Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal bylaw, S-088-02. Do you have that in your package? Take a minute and a half and read that one, will you, please?
And I think, just while everybody's bringing that document up, because it was a team effort, I'll ask Gus and Darlene if they wouldn't mind coming and sitting down here for the discussion. Basically, what the three of us are recommending is that we strike our old solid waste bylaw completely and we adopt the document that's been presented to you. It's been recommended to us by our Waste Authority, Waste Check. And that document was created in an environment where Waste Check worked with their counterparts provincially. So, the document basically honors the current legislative framework around solid waste management. It provides continuity across the region in terms of how we deal with solid waste. We have met with our contractor to make sure that the contents of the bylaw, in his opinion, do not contradict our contractual obligations, and it's fine. And as well, we've taken a look at the enforcement and we've created a framework in this proposed bylaw that is more realistically enforced and has a better likelihood of receiving a favorable judgment in court if we were to lay a charge. So, I think what I'll do is hand it back to the chairman. If you have technical questions or concerns, the three of us will work together to try and answer them.
Now, I'm going to apologize. I didn't read the policy last evening. No, I didn't. I knew some of the stuff that is in there. Now, I don't know if you folks, well, Counselor Christian, go ahead.
I liked, it has been brought to my attention about proper storage containers for waste. And your 1.4.4 explains that pretty good. It means any container used for the storage of waste at roadside must be acceptable, accessible to the contractor and must be weather-tight and animal-proof in construction such that the waste resource remains in a source-separated condition. Because I know in some areas, there is a problem with rodents and whatnot that are getting into these containers. So, it'd be good that we, it's good to see that that is there and we can enforce it. Is the proper word? So, okay, good.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I will point out that this bylaw is a little bit different than most of our other bylaws in that we are stating here that we will be working with Waste Check on the enforcement. So, we have a bylaw enforcement officer on staff at the municipal office. But for this particular bylaw, we will be leveraging Waste Check's bylaw enforcement officer for the delivery of standards on this bylaw.
Go ahead, Darlene, just.
I just want to point out that there's one change that didn't get made in this copy, actually. If you want to go to the very end, to Part 8, that's the Offense and Penalties. We had, we ran the draft bylaw by legal. And Raymond came back with a recommendation that under 8.1.1, that we have the, we change the fine to be not less than 500 and not more than 5,000. And the reason for that was, if you look at 8.1.3, people can pay 250 in lieu of prosecution. So, it didn't make sense, he said, to have a fine of 150 as the minimum. So, that's the recommendation from Raymond for your discussion.
You say of not less than 500?
Right.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Item number 5.5, No Salvaging. It states here, "No person shall pick up, remove, disturb, or otherwise interfere with the solid waste placed at the curb for collection by the municipality or by a collector, except as authorized by the municipality." Authorized by the municipality. Now, what would the municipality authorize someone to go and salvage? Give me an example of that. The reason why I say that is, we all know that people go around when it comes to a waste pickup and someone will throw at a lawnmower or something that the homeowner deems not useful, not useful anymore. I can tell you for a fact, I've personally, I haven't bought a push lawnmower for about 20 years because usually I'll go and I'll see one on the side of the road. And I'm one that, I would possibly be considered one of those that goes and salvages them. All it needs is a pole cord. I do know what its intention is. It's not for people to go and collect steel and collect, and have a great big pile in their backyard or in front of their house. I know what that intention is for. But on the other side, it also prevents some, what I would personally call, still a usable item, to go into a landfill and that could be repaired. So, I'm struggling with that part.
Do you want to start?
Sure. I think the shorter answer, in terms of when would the municipality approve of such, I think the answer is never. You would never give official approval for that activity to occur. Now, that's not saying that I wouldn't stop on the side of the road and take a lawnmower home either. But it's not an officially sanctioned activity by the municipality. So, it's providing some level of protection to the municipality. But it's also important to have it there for the very case you talked about where you do have someone who's, you know, developing a dangerous unsightly property by collecting this material. So, it gives you a tool to use if you need to use it. That's not to mean that my bylaw officer is going to be out ticketing people for taking a lawnmower that somebody put out for collection.
Yeah, and I realize that because obviously, we've seen it all through the years, someone loading up their half-ton truck full of hot water heaters and stuff. They may be stripping copper or stuff like that, something that's, but what happens to the rest? And I understand that. But it also includes every, when you talk about, it's like the guy with the chip. You do it for one, you got to do it for everybody. And I understand why it's going to be there. But I was just concerned that, the reason why I bring up the lawnmower is because, like I said, I haven't bought a lawnmower in 20 years. A new lawnmower. And it concerns me that that would stop that activity.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
And the other mechanism is also a liability mechanism. So, the way this bylaw reads, once a property owner puts solid waste to the proper place for collection, it becomes ours. And if people are scavenging and they take an item and they get hurt, it's our item. So, if they don't have permission to take the item, it protects us from some liabilities. An example is when kids play in deep freezes and get stuck in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? So, it's one of those pieces that is in there. So, it's one of those pieces that is in there for reasons to protect us. It's also one of those pieces that, when it comes to enforcement, the situation is going to dictate exactly the style of enforcement.
Thank you. No other comment?
Go ahead, Counsel.
Well, that was a good conversation, and common sense will prevail, I'm sure, with that piece of it. Having said that, are there any other, we're in a public meeting, any other high-level things that, I mean, I know that there are details through the bylaw, but are there any high-level pieces that the public might want to be aware of that are changing? That, you know, I mean, there's all those pieces behind the scenes that residents, you know, may or may not want to know, but there are some things that may be particularly germane for them to understand or want to know, or are there any things that you could discuss here that would be useful in that way?
I think fundamentally, no. There are no significant changes in either policy or practice from the previous bylaw to this bylaw. The one thing that is of significance, I think, to all the residents of all our six municipalities, is there's a prohibition in this bylaw against shipping waste outside of a municipal jurisdiction without that municipality's approval. As you probably remember, a lot of the funding that your waste authority receives is based on, they call it diversion credits, but it's actually based on how much stuff gets buried in the ground. And under the previous bylaw, if you had a large building, you could hire an outside contractor to come in, take it down, and bring it away and bury it somewhere in a private site. Whereas, if the material were to go to your solid waste park, the staff there would do every effort, make every effort to divert as much of that material from landfill or from being buried as possible. And that has financial implications for us, as we saw with the Domtex building. When things get buried, it costs us money. So, under the previous bylaw, things could be shipped out of the region and just buried, no effort made to divert them. Under this bylaw, that can't happen without municipal approval. So, it's a financial impact to the region.
I don't see any other counselors have any questions and so on at this time, and so on. Your recommendation then would be to go to council?
So, this would be for first reading, Mr. Chairman, as this is a bylaw, not a policy?
Yes. It was easily done, and so on. On that note then, I guess, thank you very much for your participation. We'll go back to item number 5, then. 5.1, NSFM Board Report, Deputy Warden Cunningham. It's from the February 20th Committee, February 20th Committee of the whole meeting, and it's minutes of December 7, 2018, Board of Directors Meeting of NSFM. You have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My questions were answered. If I had any further questions, I would direct my questions to the Warden Timothy Hibiski, who made the motion to change that, but I don't have any further questions. I just want to know the reasoning behind it. So, I wish to thank staff very much for giving that information to us, and no further action is required at this time.
5.2, Report on E-Voting from the February 20th Committee of the whole meeting, and does that, this?
I have a verbal report to give you today. If I can just find the document. So, the Association of Municipal Administrators undertook a fairly extensive analysis after the 2012 and the 2016 municipal elections around the impact of e-voting. A couple of things. So, in 2016, several municipalities worked together, and they purchased e-voting services. And again, to remind everybody, e-voting includes telephone voting and electronic voting. Depending on where a certain municipal council was, some municipalities only ran an e-voting mechanism. Some municipalities who had e-voting had no advanced ballots, because you can vote from anywhere on election day with an electronic platform. Some municipalities ran both styles of elections, so a traditional paper ballot with advanced polls and the e-voting. At the end of the day, there is no impact on voter turnout, whether you provide e-voting or not. So, as I shared with you previously, if we were to test e-voting, I would caution you on your expectations in terms of voter turnout. I would also remind you that there is no offsetting revenue for the next election around the school board, because there are no school board elections, and so there will be no offsetting revenue to help mitigate the expenses of elections. So, moving forward, if you were to consider a traditional paper ballot as well as some form of electronic voting, then your costs would not quite double, but you would be paying for two systems, and we would be looking for a returning officer who would be willing to run essentially two elections in the same timeframe. So, I think the biggest question council had was, you know, what are the money implications, and is it going to impact voter turnout? And so, verbally today, and no, there's been no data to support increase in voter turnout. And if I'm understanding council correctly, you would be interested in providing more options than fewer options for voting, which would be increased costs as well as the absence of offsetting revenue that we used to historically get.
Counselor Cunningham?
We talked about, you talked about the cost potentially doubling, essentially. What is that doubling? What's the number, basically?
Yep, so we're moving from something in the neighborhood of $10,000 to approaching $30,000 if you were to run both systems, because we'd be considering the absence of the school board revenue.
Counselor Christian?
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham answered, kind of answered my question, so if we don't want to have additional cost to our voting system, well, I don't think we should, but Counselor Cunningham answered my question.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was the one that originally brought this up, and I was asked by a few residents. And the more I thought about this, the more I said, I'm not sure if that would work in the municipality. Absolutely, I'm all for getting as many people out as you possibly can to vote. Unfortunately, out in the area where I live, electronic services are spotty at best, and we would still have to run both electoral systems, the electronic and the old paper ballot. Now, maybe something that council may want to consider is the advanced polling. We most generally have the advanced poll just here in the municipal building. Maybe it would be prudent that we could think of another area, a little farther out in the countryside, where we could possibly have an advanced poll. That, I don't believe, would be too cost restrictive or anything like that, but the electronic at this time is not an option that, at least most of the residents of the municipality in District 1 want to see, because they just don't have access to.
Yeah. Yeah, even your phone or cell service, if you go to certain areas, you have cell service, other areas out there don't.
Yeah, and not everyone has a landline anymore, and their cellphone will only work in, up in their, up in their living room with their left foot off the ground and up in a certain spot, and that wouldn't be very conducive to...
To vote.
To vote, that's for sure, and wondering if it would go through, but thank you very much, the CAO, for bringing that information forward to council. I don't think at this time, or at least this election, is something that I'd want to consider. It's always going to be on the back burner, but someone said to me the other day, they said, "Why don't you think the province and the federal government do it yet?" And they're absolutely right.
Yeah. Counselor Cunningham?
So, I agree with what everybody's saying. Counselor Christian makes a good point. I'd just like to also say thank you to our CAO for bringing us that information, so it is a data-informed decision, so to speak. We've got, what we've got is we've got a situation where we've been told there's no discernible benefit for spending an extra $10,000, $15,000, and to do that would be pretty hard for me to tell residents. So, when I have the question, "Thank you," I'll have an answer as to why we, I'm assuming we're doing what we're going to do and maybe not engaging electronic voting, because there's no increase in turnout, which would seem, on the face of it, I thought there would be, but because there's not, it's not a good use of public funds, so let's, we'll run the elections as they have been, I guess, essentially, unless...
So, I guess, then at this time, it's not a recommendation or anything, but it's for the municipality of District of Yarmouth to stay with the paper ballot for the 2020 election? Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Deputy Ward.
I'm glad that we're making this decision at this time and not waiting for a last minute. Elections are coming up in a year and a half, roughly, a year and eight months, so they're coming soon. It's going to be up a lot quicker, and I'm glad that we're doing this now, rather than waiting for the last second to try to make a decision.
Well, it gives direction to staff, they know...
Absolutely, they know where we're going. They can plan.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. 5.3, Letter from the Town of Yarmouth, Formation of Intermunicipal Steering Committee. 5.3.1, Request for Decision. You have that in your package? What is the wishes of council? Or of the committee, I'm sorry?
So, Mr. Chairman, I could probably start off the discussion. So, Warden Anthony and Deputy Warden Cunningham met with their counterparts, and my counterpart from the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of Argyle, and we talked about this opportunity for a project around increasing recreational infrastructure in the region. And the three leaders of the three municipalities have jointly crafted this request for decision, which provides a framework around the general aspects of what will be applied for to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, and further a structure for this proposed steering committee at this time. So, the document recommends that what is known as the group of nine, so that would be the two wardens and their deputies, the mayor and her deputy, and the three CAOs, that's the group of nine, are being proposed as the project steering committee. They are the investors and the owners. And further, that the scope of the application reflects the likelihood that it's going to have to be a phased-in approach in order to address several items and/or needs that have been identified through the research process. And so, what's being recommended is that the application under Phase 1 focus on the aquatic center, the indoor/outdoor track, and the fieldhouse, with a recognition that the needs for the curling community would be addressed in a future phase. And so, that's what's being presented to Committee of the Whole for a recommendation to council at the end of the month.
Counselor Christian?
Thank you. Number one, and I wanted to make sure it's absolutely clear, I support a expansion to the Mariner Center. However, as with the original Mariner Center was built, there were shortcuts taken that didn't live up to the projection of what the Mariner Center should be like, and very shortly afterwards, there was an additional money spent on expanding that Mariner Center. And there was things that were done that cannot be changed, that prevented the Mariner Center to host a number of hockey competitions that required more change rooms and shower facilities. So, I'm nervous about going down the same road again and not getting what we actually need. Now, I understand, I understand it has to be phased in, but what I don't, and I understand after the, from information I have received from the previous council, an outdoor track supported by the other two municipalities in the Argyle Region was supported by council, and I certainly will support that also. However, I do not have, I don't know where this fieldhouse opportunity came from, it just, that just blew me away. From, we had a consultant report that I don't believe mentioned about a fieldhouse, it was not, wasn't viable, but all of a sudden, now it does become viable, and with the information that I've found, or that I've heard from Bridgewater, their fieldhouse is not making a go of it. But yet, but yet, I've never seen this information in total, to see, to make a conscious decision on this. And, but we used the consultant report saying that the curling rink is, well, way too expensive to do. So, we're using the consultant report to try to make a decision on one thing, and then we're sticking in another component that we really don't have, I don't have information on. But I do want to see the project go ahead, and I'm disappointed about the fact that the fieldhouse is there, and, you know, and the different aspects of the YMCA are not included either. But that's just my opinion.
Was there anybody else that has, yeah? Counselor Durkey? Or, no, yes, Trevor, I'm sorry.
So, is with any of these large projects that are shared among three municipal units, there will be, there's always imperfect information. It's not that people haven't done their due diligence or anything like that, but we've been talking about it, collecting information. I was there for the consultants, the unveiling of the report a number of years ago, read it, listened to it, and he was very clear, it wasn't carved in stone. Did talk about the curling rink as being an option, but again, at the end of the day, this is, well, maybe that's an option down the road, and the steering committee's put in place. We've asked those folks to look into issues more. My understanding is that the fieldhouse in Bridgewater is very, is not making money, but none of this does make money. We know that going into it. There will likely be a little bit more expense. Having said that, there's always that balance between expense and how many things we're going to be able to do there, including like the addition of a curling rink, all this will cost. I think, given the talk in the community, the fieldhouse is largely supported, there were probably not a number of organizations that were consulted, and again, there are limitations even to the report that was given by the consultant, it was good, but there are limitations in scope and so forth. So, all in all, with what I'm hearing, I think the recommendation is sage advice at this point. Having said that, it's something that we can all agree on, because there's three of us, we need to move this project ahead and potentially look at other opportunities down the road, but it's probably right-sized. I don't want to get into a situation where we're adding on other capabilities that may not fit the pocketbook of the taxpayer either, right? So, this is a good, it's a compromise, yes, you can have everything there, but I think it makes sense for the three units in Yarmouth. I think it does, it does the top-rated pieces, the pool, workout gym area, fieldhouse piece there in it, to my understanding, and those are the important, those are the highest priority pieces, all told, after we've looked at all the information, the consultant's report, and the feedback from other units and additional organizations. So, I think we should move ahead posthaste with this and get it done, because that's what our residents want. what our residents want. And no, it will never be, not everybody's going to be absolutely satisfied with the move forward. And, you know, hindsight's 20/20. What happened before at the Mariner Center had people had the benefit of being able to look into the future, they may have done it differently, but I'm not, I wouldn't be critical of them, and I wasn't involved at that point. And I hope people won't be critical of us in the future, because I think we've got to make a decision based on the information, the best information we have now. And I think I'll be supportive of the recommendation, because I think that that's, the recommendation has taken all those factors into account, and we need to move forward. So for that reason, I'll be supporting the recommendation.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate and respect the work that has already gone into this by the Group of Nine. I know it's difficult, and we have three municipalities working together. We all know that we agree on some things, and we're not going to agree on others. But for this matter, in order to move this forward, we need to make some decisions, some tough decisions, that a lot of people will appreciate and some people won't. I believe that the Group of Nine is moving in the right direction, so I will certainly be agreeing with the recommendation that the Group of Nine be established as the project steering committee for the time being. And in terms of Phase One of Recreation Infrastructure Project, we're desperately needing an aquatic center, we know that. I think what may have to, a suggestion might be that we provide the public with a definition of what a fieldhouse actually is, because some people may not understand that. I think that we're looking at meeting a lot of different groups' needs by building that type of facility, and that it can be converted into so many different things. So to me, that's a real positive, because we do have many different needs. So at this time, I will be supporting both recommendations.
Counselor Allen?
Yes, I'm in complete agreement with Counselor Durkey, and I'm in support of this 100%. I definitely think we have to get moving as far as getting the steering committee going. I think the Group of Nine is a great start. That's not saying that in the future it doesn't grow. We know we have to have an application in by, I think, the end of June. But let's get one thing straight. We don't know 100% that there is money available. So until we get this together and get it going and get our application in, we're, I hate to use, we're dead in the water. So I am definitely for getting the steering committee geared up and moving forward and finding out if there's some money so we can, we can get this going. I think it's great for our area. Thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes. I'd love to have a curling rink, but apparently, I guess, we have to make a choice. The one thing that bothers me about a curling rink in an outside field, whatever, opposed to the fieldhouse, from my understanding, a curling rink is seasonal, and that's the only time that you use it. It's just for four, five months, six months, or whatever. And an outdoor field is only used in the nice weather. But a fieldhouse inside can be used 12 months out of the year. So I guess I'm, I'm going to go with the recommendation and support that.
Okay. So I take it then the recommendation is to go to the council meeting, that you recommend that the Group of Nine, the steering committee, to go forward from there. I guess it was Counselor Cushing is first, and then...
Again, we mentioned about all the opportunities that the fieldhouse can be used for 12 months of the year, and we certainly like to target the curling rink that only can be used during the winter season. I'm sure there's opportunities that could be used in the summertime also, if we wanted to investigate it enough. My, and I'll continue to say, my biggest problem is I don't have the information on the fieldhouses, fieldhouse, what it can be used for, the cost of it. I don't have anything to make a real conscious decision, but I'm only one vote. If council approves of what is presented here, then I will support it 100%. But I just want to make my opinion known to the public that I don't know what the use of the fieldhouse is really going to be beneficial for us, whereas I know the curling rink is, we do have curlers. Do we know that that can't be used in the summertime? We don't know that. We're just assuming that the fieldhouse is going to be used 12 months. That's all I have to say.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I guess my question is through you to the CAO. Is there a link on our municipal website for the recreational needs assessment that was done three years ago?
I can't confirm that, but I will definitely make sure that at the Group of Nine meeting that we talk about the communications piece, and we are intentional about communicating information out to the public together as a team. You raise a good point. The recreational needs assessment that was done was just that, an assessment. And to Counselor Cushing's point, there were recommendations and/or conclusions drawn by that consultant that were done based on a body of work that that team executed. As elected officials, and if we go from the municipality of Aragile to the Town of Yarmouth to the municipality of Yarmouth, you folks are the elected officials, and you're talking to your residents every day, so you have a form of community engagement that's a completely different style. And the discussion that took place when the Group of Nine met and formulated this recommendation for the councils was, look, we appreciate that work, and we realize that there's a certain amount of foundation under that work, but it doesn't exactly match up with what you're hearing on the street. So the needs assessment piece is there, it's a public document, we can make sure it's part of our communications plan moving forward. But really, what the Group of Nine is endeavoring to do is they're endeavoring to confirm the mandate from the public. So A, that piece is old, B, it doesn't line up with what elected officials are hearing, and C, it's not necessarily future-proofing the community for what the population demographics need to happen in order to reverse the trend of declining and aging population.
I'm not finished, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I know you can Google it, Counselor Durkey just mentioned that you can Google it, and, but a lot of people seem to be throwing a lot of things out there with no real information. And the first thing I wanted to make sure was there's easy access to the recreational needs assessment. I'm going to be posting a link on my social media pages to make sure that people get... I am part of the Group of Nine, and as a businessperson's perspective, I, I'm concerned. I think this is coming up very quickly, there's a lot of work to be done. These are my own personal views. I really appreciate council being open and truthful on their concerns. Counselor Cushing brought up a very few good points. Actually, if you read the needs assessment, which I have, there is a couple things in there about an indoor artificial fieldhouse with artificial turf to accommodate indoor soccer, and sufficient space and flexibility to accommodate track and field, other sporting events, and a gymnastics facility. And at this time, in that report, in that report, I'm going to make that clear, not what we're hearing on the street, but in that report, that these facilities don't have adequate support to justify them being built. So the Group of Nine has a lot of work to do. And I'd appreciate anything and everything, be it face-to-face, whatever, to at least let me know. I'm going to try to weigh all the pros and cons here, because what the Group of Nine is tasked with is a very big task in a short amount of time. I'm concerned about that, but I'm willing to move forward and make it work as per the residents and council's request. I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and make this work, but there's a lot of information out there, and I think the first piece is people to read the needs assessment. That is only a, that company's perspective and what they picked up, as the CAO pointed out, but we're hearing on the street, different things. I want to make sure that this is done right. I don't want to go in and say, well, we're going to do this part of the thing, but we only have X amount of money, so we're going to slash that. I think that's one of the mistakes that was made in the original building of the Mariner Center. I think that was a big mistake, because what did it cost us in the end? It cost us a lot more to add those few hundred seats in the end of the arena, a lot more. I want, we've got one crack at this, I want it done right. It's going to be a big job.
Yep.
So from what I'm hearing is, yeah, we're going to be moving forward with the Group of Nine.
Yeah, we meet on Friday.
On Friday, yeah. So I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and get this moving. But please, email, phone call, text, let me know what you're thinking, because I'm making my decision based on what my counselors, or should I say, my counselors are, this council is. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
My apologies. I'd like to...
Okay. Now, was there any other comments and so on from, I have just a couple. Counselor Cushing is right, in the original Mariner Center by Skate Yarmouth and so on. And I'm not going to call them mistakes, but what happened back then and so on. But Counselor Cunningham also brought forward the thought, hey, that was then, this is now, we're trying to move forward. When the Group of Nine originally met and came up with this concept, there's no guarantee. Our main focus, as the Deputy Warden can attest to, is the aquatic center and what might also be added to that original application going forward, what would be the most appropriate at this time. Once this application goes in, we may only get enough for the aquatic center. That's where it may lie. But try for what we feel that possibly would be accepted quicker going forward, and if we put in, no disrespect to the curling club and aquatic, they may say, well, no, to the whole thing. So we went with, or we think, is the, I'll say, the good worm on the hook, the best worm on the hook, to try and get from the federal government. But when we say the end of June, gentlemen, be open here, the RIT could be dropped the third week or the second week of June, there's no guarantee. So we have to get this in, in my deadline, in my mind, would be the first of June, that it's into them by the first of June, because after the RIT is dropped, all the work that we've done, it's like, no, you're going to be on a holding pattern. So I think we, on Friday, John, we should stress that it should be in before the end of May. Let's kind of put May in the bag right here, because I don't want to wait until, you know, June, if it drops, you know, the fifth or sixth of June, then we're out of the picture.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I want to be clear and manage expectations. So submitting an application will actually require the federal government to open the fund to applications. So the call for applications has not been made yet. We do not have the application form yet. So I realize everybody is sensitive to the timing issue. I just want to be clear that the steering committee can only be held accountable to things that it can do, and it can't make the application until the call is open, just so that we're all clear.
Yeah. But we have all our work done, so we can do what it is. But anyway, so then I guess the recommendation to go to council is that the Group of Nine will be the steering committee, and that it'll be the aquatic center and the fieldhouse track and so on. A comment should be known, when they built the Wellness Center in Pictou, there was a lot of resistance and so on, and where they put it, and everybody thought that, you know, it wasn't going to be used, et cetera, et cetera. And my understanding is, talking to some of my colleagues and so on, it is used a lot by people from surrounding communities and so on. The RAS Center in Truro, I have fellow colleagues in Truro, in Colchester County, that make a point of going and using the walking track. They pay, I think he said a dollar to use the walking track, and he said, if I'm going to complain, I'm miles ago and use it. So they're starting to use it and so on. It would be the same here. Day one, you have a lot of people going and looking at something. Day two, you have a few fewer people, but it'll slowly build its way back up. And I think it's the right way to go, and let's get on the bus, I guess. Go ahead, Counselor Durkey, and then we'll move on.
Thank you. One of the things that I think we also need to consider is when the federal government goes to look at this application, they're going to say, or look at the fact is, or one fact to consider, is will this facility be available to people of all ages, right? Will they, like, what's the largest group of people that will be able to use this facility? And that's what I think that we need to consider, is we want it used as much as possible, we know it's going to be deficit-funded, that's just the way they are, but the more, the merrier. So that's first, and that's going to be first and foremost in their mind as well.
Okay. But now, we'll move on. Item number six, for your information, was a copy of a letter from East Hans to Minister Porter, minimum planning requirements. You have that in your package. I don't know if you just want to make some verbal comments or just... That's how the provincial, I shouldn't say that, that's how government rolls. Was there any discussion anybody wished to have? Otherwise, we will move on to item number seven. I don't know, did the CAO wish to have some comment on the letter from East Hans pertaining to the government's short notice on minimum planning and...
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't want to be critical of any municipal government's right to take a stance on their opinion on whether or not they were engaged and at what level they were engaged in a process that impacts their operations. I would say, as a staff person from an operational perspective, I can understand the complexities that would be involved in having 50 separate meetings to talk about minimum planning standards. And in particular with this, especially because the change, the major change, is basically to create a framework in Nova Scotia where every municipality has a municipal planning strategy and a land use bylaw that covers the whole jurisdiction. If you can believe it, because Yarmouth has not been this way, there are several municipalities in the province of Nova Scotia that had lands within their jurisdiction that had no planning documentation to guide growth. And so this is, this is what this is aimed at, is to basically create a framework within the province where we can say to the world, in terms of our growth strategy, here's how we're planning, community by community, for growth, and here's what we're allowing for. So I respect our colleagues, and I respect their right to express their opinion, but I can understand from an operational perspective how difficult it would be to meet with 50 separate municipal councils around this issue, given what they were intending to achieve.
Well said. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. But it appears by this letter to the Minister Porter that they received notice January 9th through RSVP the date of January 11th, was insufficient time. Actually, I remember seeing that, and I am the chair of PAC, I do work a regular job, actually, two or three. However, that is a real short notice for rural councilors to attend something that, like this. I really wished I could attend, but there was no way that I could attend due to my schedule. You got to at least give your employer a little bit of notice, preferably at least a week.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that would be one of my beefs. I do hear where they're coming from. And also that these were held, all the four sessions were held during, at the same time, during the workday.
Yeah.
There's no chance for an evening meeting, which I could have eas, not fairly easily made, but I could have made. There's no chance for an evening meeting, which I could have eas, not fairly easily made, but I could have made. And that's where it's come through. I believe councillor Cunningham had mentioned too, the NSFM meetings sometimes are, are held during the weekdays. And actually, we had lobbied to try to get some of the, the working sessions done during the weekend. Because it is difficult for councillors that do work. Unfortunately, this is not a, a full-time job, although your time requirements make it a full-time job, but... That's where it seems to be going. I can understand, and a little bit more notice would have been appropriate, in my opinion.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we'll move on to item number seven, which is business. Seven point one is the Hundred Meals, councillor Durkey, you have the floor.
Very much, Mister Chair. For the past two years, I have been volunteering and I, for the Hundred Meals and helping prepare and serve Hundred Meals. This is a program that was initiated by Mayor's Task Force to begin to address some of the unfortunate statistics of poverty in our area. What I'd like to recommend to council is, well, first of all, I want to say that the people who attended Hundred Meals are from all, all three municipalities. I mean, I've seen that firsthand. We have a lot of people that come in. It, it, it's not just to feed a meal, it's, it's, anybody can go. What's really great is it's a great opportunity for seniors to come out of the community and sit down with other seniors in the community and just chat over a meal. It's a really positive experience. I know we have a number of people living in our municipality who are, who are volunteering for Hundred Meals. I don't know councillor Cushion, if you've attended at Knights of Columbus, but they've been doing some breakfasts there, which are very successful. What I'd like to recommend is that our council donate the requested amount of $500 to the continuance, so that the Hundred Meals program can continue in the future. I believe there was a letter that was sent last year making that request, which I don't think that we, we did at that point. But just something that I would like to recommend for our budget, upcoming budget.
Okay, go ahead, CIO, I guess I'll let you have the floor, go ahead.
Sure, so just in terms of continuity and consistency, in terms of how you govern, we would need a grant application for that, and we can include that with the, the... Is it a society that set up councillor Durkey? Or is it a grassroots group of people just coming together, it's a movement?
It's, it's more of a movement, it's not a society. But it's run through the town, but it's in various locations. And I think the town puts out a request for donations from all the municipalities, from private citizens, et cetera. And it's, so the funding goes through the town to, to the different areas that are actually hosting.
What I could do, I could just reach out and find out who the staff person is leading that. And just for the sake of continuity and consistency, have them fill out the paperwork for us, and then we can include it in the batch for the budget.
That would be greatly appreciated. We do, it does service a lot of people from the municipality of Yarmouth.
councillor Cushion.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Couple of things. Number one, Knights of Columbus have held a, a, a community breakfast third Sunday of every month for many, many years, so which fit, which fitted into this program very well. But also, on Tuesdays, different churches throughout the county host a luncheon for, for anybody who needs a luncheon. You'd be surprised of how many students come to that for a free meal. And some seniors also come. But we often attend those meals and we make our donation to it, right? But when I, when I first started doing it, or going to them, I, I was really surprised of how many people come for that, for that soup, sandwich, and a cookie. It was just, it was just unbelievable. I, I, you know, I won't say unbelievable, but I was really surprised, I guess. And we haven't been lately, for other reasons, but, but we, we do attend it quite often. We do support that, and we also support the Knights of Columbus Community Breakfast, which any proceeds from that, any, that the Knights of Columbus get from them, they turn back into the community. And just, you know, when we're talking about that, the Knights of Columbus have, have put back into the community over $50,000 last year alone, back into the community through different efforts. So they're very strong in supporting, in supporting the community. And the meals are one, and the tri-county pregnancy group is another one that they, they support very, very much. So, but I just wanted to branch out and show you that there is some things going on in our, in our county, I guess, that, that do support and, and they do fit right into the Hundred Meals, so.
Okay, moving on, seven point two, Mariner Center ownership, that was myself. I just wonder, as, as we're all well aware, Mariner Center is owned by the, the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of District of Yarmouth. And we have a funding partner in Argyle who has shown a lot of support over the last number of years on all of the requests that we have asked of them for Zamboni funding, et cetera, building repair, and so on. And I was just wondering if, and if you wish to have some discussion, that's fine. But if you just wish to think about it, would the municipal, or would this municipal unit be open to if Argyle wished, if Argyle wished to become an owner of the Mariner Center? Would you be open to that? Wish to become an owner along with ourselves, like a three-way ownership, that was all. Go ahead, councillor.
I mean, on the face of it, that would be a welcome development. Having said that, I mean, obviously, like a memorandum of understanding or, you know, some sort of instrument to govern that. Ownership and cooperation, collaboration would, would need to be so. So I'd say, I would say, conceptually, yes. And certainly, given their involvement with, with the expansion project, that seems reasonable. But, but again, the, the, the details would have to be fleshed out before we, before we came to an agreement.
councillor Durkey.
I agree with councillor Cunningham. When you look at the numbers now, or the percentage of people using the facility at this time, that I think the, it's close to, I think municipality of Yarmouth and the municipality of Argyle have the highest numbers of usage of the facility. So yes, I would, would agree, but it's all the, big question, always a big question when you're working with that many group, numbers of people. Just putting the, the organization of it would be a challenge. But if, if they were willing to go through that, then yes, absolutely.
councillor Cushion.
Me again. Yes, I do support that, that recommendation also. But just to let you know, the municipality of Argyle residents, they use the Mariner Center the most. I think it's something like, I, I won't give you any numbers, but they use it the most. The municipality of Yarmouth is second, and then the town of Yarmouth is third. I do know that information.
Okay, it's, it's something that hasn't been pursued. I just wanted to get the feeling of this council and so on. And I'll have further discussion with the CIO. And then maybe we'll present it to their CIO. It won't be this Friday or anything, but it's just something down the road if, you know, to move forward. Seven point three, fire department discussion, myself again. Councillors, as we're all well aware, that the dispatch and the town has been dismissed. And the volunteer departments in the municipality of Yarmouth now go through us to the dispatch of Digby. And far as I know right now, from what a little bit of discussion I've had, it's working all right. I do realize that we're going to be having further discussion with the town of Yarmouth. But my, my thoughts was that I think we should have at least a minimum of one meeting per year, if not two meetings per year, with the fire chiefs of the volunteer fire departments in the municipality of Yarmouth and the ones we share with, with Argyle. If they have any concerns or any recommendations that they wish to bring forward. I believe a line of communication with your partners is important. So that's what I was bringing forward. Also, the other part of this fire department discussion, and I've had this discussion with our CIO, is would you ever be interested, or would you be interested in, I'm going to say it, a volunteer fire department that looks after basically the five districts that are looked after now by the town? Which would be Daniels, Smiling, Trevor's, none of Petty's, Summer and Gerard's, and Lawrence. Not all of it, but is that something you would like staff to, I'll say in the near future? I mean, we're coming into budget, so we're not going to be doing it at this point. But is it something you'd be interested in for them to look into, to see if there would be interest? And what the financial cost might be and so on? I think it's councillor Cushion, go ahead.
Yes, I agree that we should meet with the volunteer fire department, volunteer fire department chiefs at least once a year, if not twice a year, depending, see what they have to say. If they'd like to meet with us twice a year, maybe three times a year, sure enough. But I think we should ask them, see which, you know, but I think communication is very important. And as for your other, your other subject that you mentioned, I think of with all the developments of the past, I think we should have some type of information that we can digest, or instead of just making, going to make a blank, blank, blank statement. I think we should investigate it and just have, just be prepared for whatever.
councillor Cunningham.
So I, I, I feel that what councillor Cushion had to say is very well put. I, I'm not, I'm not certain just what that looks like. I mean, District Five has fire protection from, from the town, partly volunteer service. In other jurisdictions, other districts have volunteer fire department combinations of, and we, we all know that. So I think the communication piece is really important. So I'm, I'm not certain from, from whence this suggestion comes, if it's the fire department. Some people are talking about it. I don't know if it makes any sense or not, or that people want to do this or not. I mean, I think our volunteers largely will drive this. One, you know, either, either to, to do something different or to maintain the status quo, or do something slightly different. Obviously, our dispatch has, has changed. So, but in any event, I think the important thing is, is whatever is being suggested. I'm not certain just what that is. When it comes to council, I'd, I'd like to have a little bit more backstory about, about what, what it is that we're, we're looking at doing, because I'm, I'm not totally clear. But I think the first step is always to go to the volunteer fire departments, to councillor Cushion's point. Have a talk about this and get their, get their view, because they're the experts in the area and they, they do the volunteering and all that. But will this work, is this, is this, is this better or not? I'm not, I'm not certain what's being proposed, so I'm not really clear on what the move for, way forward is. Other than starting to talk to our volunteer fire departments, getting more information.
Thank you. deputy warden.
I have seemed to have quite a direct line with the volunteer fire departments, who are a part of one. There, there has been some discussion and some, some things mentioned to me by chiefs and deputy chiefs about, about their district redistribution for response times. We've had that happen before by, by a number of residents lobbying. I think it was out in Lake Vonn on the Mood Road, if I'm not mistaken.
I think, yes.
That, that, it used to be covered by the town fire protection service, but the residents of the area wanted, and the fire department wanted to be able to cover that because of the response time, because they would just have to head up the highway, up the road two minutes, and they're there. There's been also some other places that's been suggested to me. But I do believe that meeting, initial meeting with the fire departments to see what their feelings are. I don't know if they're all thinking about district redistribution. There's some areas out in the municipality where it's covered by one fire department, out in my area at least. But then the other, there's another fire department that's a lot closer by the area that's covered. And maybe it's just a, a point of redistribution, because I do believe there's guidelines in order for you to get homeowners insurance as well. Also, another meeting with, with the fire chiefs and stuff and issues you were talking about, Mister Warden. I got an email from a, a fire department that there's another community, Yarmouth County, county mutual aid meeting this Thursday, March 21st. And there's an invitation out to all of you, and they wanted me to express and what this issue that's coming up is about the lack of ambulances in the province of Nova Scotia. Fire departments, fire departments are, are, are being tasked with putting extra strain on some of the departments because of the lack of appropriate medical services to residents in time of need, due to the lack of ambulance services. So that's another issue that, that's actually hit the forefront. I do believe it was on the evening news here in Allo, not that long ago. I can't remember where I heard it. But that's something that the Mutual Aid Society is going to be talking about, and another strain on, on our local taxpayers. Or I shouldn't say our taxpayers, but at least our, our local volunteer fire departments. And that's another issue that, that's coming up. So it's the 21st.
And where they have it?
Where, I bet it here. It's usually in Lake Vonn, but I'll, I'll find out for sure. Usually it's at seven o'clock. It's Thursday, March 21st. Usually it's held at Lake Vonn, but I'll, as soon as I find that information out, I'll let you all know. So that's another reason why we should be meeting biannually at least with our, with our local fire department chiefs and deputy chiefs. Because there is some issues out there that, that councillors may not necessarily know of.
Well, I, I just want, I'm sorry, councillor Cushion, go ahead.
I think that was your, the topic that you had there about should we meet with volunteer fire departments? I think deputy warden had just stressed how important that really is. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to move forward.
Well, I, I think there's an avenue there if we're going to be, where, where the basic go-through to dispatch, because now the volunteer fire departments, we signed the contracts last week and so on with each one of the fire, volunteer fire departments, that the municipality is, they're going to pay the municipality. The municipality is going to be the point to pay Digby.
They're, they're not paying, it's, it's the general rate.
Well, general rate, yes, I mean, but we're, we're the, it's going through us, yeah, and, and so on. So that if there's an issue, that Digby doesn't have to deal with any one of the, they'll, they'll deal with us, but we'll deal with them and so on. So it, it just makes it a lot easier all the way around. But I've been thinking about just what, what we want to do. I've heard some, I'm not going to call them stories, I, I've heard some things. And I think some of the volunteer fire departments are displeased with the way some of the things that are going on. Case in point, there was a fire. The town had to respond, and they called mutual aid right, right then when the fire was called. Mutual aid, they got ready, they went down, got their fire truck and was ready to roll, and they were canceled. They went home. Then they heard on their radio that they were still waiting for the town's tanker. One of the volunteers was late getting in to pick up the tanker to take it to the fire. So I, I don't know what's going on and so on, but I just thought I'd mention that. I think, you know, I don't want to get into a big, a big issues within our municipality, and we could have prevented something, that's all I'm looking at. Go ahead, deputy warden.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. It's funny how social media works. I just sent Jason, the president of the Mutual Aid Society, about a date and time. So it's the 21st, like I said, Lake Vonn Fire Department at 7:30.
7:30. 7:30.
I don't believe I'll be attending that. That's not a meeting I usually attend. It's usually only chiefs and deputies. I do attend them from time to time.
But you're saying they're inviting us?
It's here. I would like to extend an invitation to you, or any council member wishing to attend, as this directly affects your residents. That was his exact message to me. This is via text.
Okay. Good enough, then. We'll move on to 7.4, letter from the town of Shelburne, Provincial HST. Do you have that also in your package? Do you wish to make comments, or?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, since my mic is already on. I think that this is a concern that the mayor of the town of Shelburne has. She also mentioned in there that maybe we should be forwarding this to the NSFM, which I agree is the appropriate spot for this to be discussed amongst our colleagues. I personally would agree with her, that using some of the gas tax money for, for your local infrastructure, and that's what she's lobbying for, or I shouldn't say she, the town council is lobbying for, I believe.
HST dollars, Deputy Warden, not gas tax.
Yeah, 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 yes, HST dollars. And I think the NSFM, NSFM is the, is the proper place to put this.
Anybody else? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor.
I think, well, it does say at the end, please send all letters of support to the clerk at town.chelburne.ns.ca, or by mail. So I guess they're asking for a letter of support for this. I guess, maybe we could send a letter to them saying in response to this, that generally we're in favor of increasing revenue streams from the province to the municipal units to cover additional costs that we're incurring. I don't know if this is the best piece, but, the best way of doing it, I haven't, I don't understand the inner workings, but I'm suggesting that we might, if it's okay by council, to respond in that way, that generally we're in support, and we can forward this to the UNSM, not UNSM, I'm, NSFM, for further consideration.
Well, there, her last, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't want to cut you off, Mr. Chairman. So I think to build on and be more specific with Counselor Cunningham's comment, this is, this is a Nova Scotia issue that the 50 municipal units should align on and work collaboratively towards. So any letter of support that might be sent should focus on leveraging the NSFM process to analyze the pros and cons of the initiative, to understand how it will impact other files that are, that are on the table. Before you support the initiative in its essence, I think it would be prudent to support the process that's being suggested here, which is to leverage the NSFM to unpack the file further.
Okay. I'm going to disagree with you on that part. They're asking for a letter of support from this municipal unit to go to Shelburne, to show that we are interested, or would be interested, in a percentage of the HST. Anything, any request that goes to NSFM has to go in a resolution form. And the new form, I don't think, unless all 50 municipal units asked NSFM to look into this, NSFM is not going to move on anything unless it's in a resolution form.
If it's to lobby for change, but research can be taken to the NSFM through the Board of Directors to find out more information, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it's an avenue to try, but I bet she's going to come back as you're going to have, but, okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm just, Mr. Chairman, I'm confident that the NSFM would, even if, even if the members were open to this, this movement, and to lobby and advocate on this file, that there would be a significant body of research that would be required. And I'm confident that research can be done via direction to staff, to the board, via the Board of Directors to the NSFM staff. Because I don't see language in here in terms of resolution sessions and, right? So I'm, I'm thinking that this is early stages in the process.
Okay, so then where, who do we, who do we lobby? They're asking for a letter of support to be sent to Shelburne.
Which, which I concur, but I think we should focus on process and research at this point, rather than jump too quick to resolutions.
Okay, okay. Then would that be, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor, I apologize.
Maybe this is an issue that can be discussed at the regional meeting, which is coming up in April. Maybe that's something that should be brought forward then, to get a feel for how everybody, what everybody's thinking, and then move forward with that.
Good point.
Another great strategy.
Yeah.
Thanks. So would that be consensus of council, then, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that would be consensus, yeah. Seventy-five, seventy-five percent of eighteen, point seventy-five, eighteen percent. Okay, so you'll, you'll forward that to the regional meeting?
Yes, sir.
And, okay. Okay. 7.5, letter from a resident attracting investment to the Yarmouth area. You had that in your package, councillors. What is your wish to respond, or? Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. When I read this letter, I, I've always thought of that way myself, being a baby boomer, I'm retired now, I'm not, I'm not going to leave this place, because I feel this is the best place to live in Nova Scotia. And this gentleman that wrote the letter here has a place himself. I don't know if he's got any ties to, to Yarmouth County. He does, okay. But I know of two people right away that came here on vacation, one from Ontario, one from B.C., and both of them, just on vacation, love this place, and they live here now. And they go on vacation in Ontario and B.C. And one of them is with Iasta, very nice gentleman, and he's got a lot of, a lot of input in this, in this area. He knows a lot, and he promotes this, this area all the time. And but what this gentleman that wrote the letter is saying, a lot of these retirees have a lot of information, and, you know, know people of influence, or business-wise, and stuff like that. And they talk about, he talks about the, the real estate, and it was some funny that when a community in Bloom talked about, about the same thing, I thought he had read the letter. But anyways, there's a lot of potential in this area, there always been, we just, we, a lot, a lot of people, a lot of us, we don't see the trees for the forest, you know. And, but there is a lot, and the tourists, a lot of the tourists see that here. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Certainly, any good ideas are welcome at this council table, and I'd like to thank the gentleman for sending the letter. I think maybe the best way forward is to have, have staff take the letter back, look at what's been done in the area, and perhaps if there are any recommendations moving forward from an economic development perspective, that they could, they could bring those to a future council meeting. And perhaps that's how we could respond to the letter, saying, you know, certainly thank you for the ideas, we appreciate them, and we're, we're, we're looking at these through an economic development lens, and then come back to council with some, some potential suggestions, or as to how we can fit some of these ideas into the, into the move forward, potentially.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, is there?
Go ahead, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you very much. I think one of the things that was mentioned in the regional, is that meeting, the state of the region, was the fact that, you know, we don't market ourselves well enough. And we don't. We have amazing assets, and I think that even the real estate agencies and organizations could be doing, should be doing more to promote us in areas such as BCB, Alberta, Ontario. Because I too, as Counselor LeBlanc has mentioned, I've met so many people very recently who have just moved here from away, and, you know, we're not talking about old retirees, quote unquote. We're talking about those people who, there are people in their 50s and 60s who have very valuable pieces of property out west, and, you know, they can come down here, buy a piece of property, and live off the proceeds of their home. We have so much to offer, and again, it's just a matter of selling ourselves and marketing ourselves. And these people also come here, and they're not really, maybe you could say they're semi-retired or retired from a previous job, but they'll come, some are coming down, and they're looking to recreate what they did, or to start a new business. So it's quite a different perspective as to say, oh, you know, we're going to have this, an old retirement community. That's not really what people are thinking. They're thinking, let's go buy whatever is there, and, and, and build or create. It is pretty amazing how many people are here. Yes, we do have a fantastic place to live. I think we take it for granted, especially those who've never lived anywhere else. So, so it's just a matter of putting ourselves more on the map than we have in the past.
Thank you. Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, I, I agree with Counselor Durkey, and also, I would like to ask the CAO, I think she mentioned, mentioned that the REN was on top of this, or had some, some plans or some activity in the same direction?
So the Western Regional Enterprise Network actively participates in population-related initiatives. So they have staff that help employers qualify for the Atlantic Immigration Pilot, but we've taken it a step further. So through the Association Municipal Administrators of Nova Scotia, Angelique LeBlanc, the CEO for the REN, is chairing a subcommittee around population. And it's basically taking a look at population through an economic development lens, and going further than what the Atlantic Immigration Pilot seeks to do, and, and to reach out into these types of opportunities that this gentleman raises here. So to Counselor Trevor Cunningham's point, and to the other comments that have been made, what I'd like to do is, is through consensus of committee, the whole, is to take this letter to the population subcommittee at my AMA meetings, and add this to our slate of opportunities there, and leverage it as part of that piece of work. So I guess what I'm saying is, if, you know, if we're going to promote this opportunity that's been described to us, and accurately described, in my opinion, by this gentleman, it's for, it's the same in the region. So instead of us developing a portal, or a website, or a campaign, we should be doing it at a broader level for the region. So if everybody's okay with, with me doing it that way, that's probably how I think we'd get better returns for our investment.
Sure. I would, I would like also mention, Counselor Durkey said about being a retirement place. If we, if we get retirees here, I'm talking about lots of them, I probably won't see that in my lifetime, but I hope if we have, the businesses will come. I don't care if it's retirement, retirement people or not. They'll, they'll spend the money, and the businesses will be here.
Relating to what Counselor LeBlanc just mentioned, when you have retired people who come to, to live in your community, they are also looking for services, such as lawn mowing, snow plowing their driveways, making gardens for them, planting trees, and, and social work, and, you know, volunteering, and enjoying an expanded Mariner Centre, and taking up curling and whatnot. Then when you get into 50 to 60-year-old people, there is another group that would enjoy the expansion of the Mariner Centre, and doing other activities there, and enjoying the aquatic centre, the pool, I'm going to call it, you know. So there's an opportunity there for us to build, to realize that, great opportunity.
That's like a fellow councillor who's always telling them. Okay, yes, on that note, some direction has been given to the CAO, and she'll look forward from there. On that note, we've already done your bylaws. Bylaws and so on. Was there any further business of, of the whole? Is an adjournment would be in order? Thank you.